Should be up here. Is Ms. Neal still here? Yes, there she is. When is our -- what's the dates for the final process? Just so the public is aware of the process after the hearings. Or Mr. Matlock, yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ms. Neal. No, I'm kidding.[23.43][23.43](Laughter). The final vote would be in the November 6 meeting. And so you'll receive notes from tonight if there's any outstanding issues that you'd like us to look into. And then you'll receive Cabinet's recommendation prior to that. And then the final vote will be on November 6.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to our next agenda item, which is -- I'm sorry, Golden View Academy.
Our second charter applicant this evening is Golden View Classical Academy, and they are being represented by Mr. Derek Schuler.
I apologize for dropping the word "classical."
That's the important part of the name there.
I guess I understand that.
So, well, good evening, Board. Thanks for having us and allowing us this opportunity to introduce Golden View Classical Academy to you. Again, my name is Derek Schuler. These are other members of our team. In the interest of time, we'll forego the introductions and get to the slide until it's late and everybody's ready to move on. So, let me just make sure I can work with the buttons. There we go. The mission and vision of Golden View Classical Academy, again, our mission is to train the minds and improve the hearts of young people through a classical, content-rich education in the liberal arts and sciences with instructions to the principles of moral character and civic virtue in an orderly, disciplined environment. And by doing that, our intent is to develop within our students the intellectual and personal habits and skills upon which responsible, independent, productive lives are built, and the firm belief that such lives are the basis of a free and just society. So, the next slide is just a quick overview. Again, the key points on this slide, that we're a classical liberal arts core knowledge school. It's really important to understand what we're doing. We're in over 20 years of having charter schools here in Colorado. And when charter schools first came around, there was a lot of innovation, a lot of risk-taking. We threw a lot of things up against the wall to see what stuck, what worked, and what didn't. At this time, we know what things do work. So it's important to highlight that we are replicating what's already currently high-quality and proven models here in Colorado. When you look at the top 10 high schools in the state of Colorado, you'll notice that they have something in common. They're liberal arts schools with a classical influence. And you have in your slides a list of those. And they include Jeffco's own Devlin High School here as well. When we look at what exactly we're replicating, we're most closely replicating Ridgeview Classical and Liberty Common Schools up in Fort Collins. And they're consistently rated in the top 5, if not the top 10, schools in Colorado. I'll give you an educational interview, just overview, define some of our terms. Again, we're a classical school. What that means is we have a focus on literature that's withstood the test of time with an emphasis on language mastery and critical thinking. We also include Latin and Socratic instruction in our program. Now, as a liberal arts school, again, we focus on literature and history, which is known as the human world; math and science, which is the natural world; and the intersection of the two, which is the arts and the music as well. We're also a core knowledge school, and we know that a core knowledge program is a proven successful program. Again, it's a content-rich sequence with a spiraling structure that builds on previous learning. While the core knowledge program only goes through 8th grade, we're continuing that philosophy through the high school level as well. Want to talk about liberal arts and STEM. STEM's a very popular word nowadays, and Jeffco has identified a great demand for it as a popular choice. When, in the last slide, we talked about what is liberal arts education. Arts, math, and science are key components of a liberal arts education. U.S. News &amp; World Report came out and did a list this past year where they rated the highest, the top 100 STEM schools in the United States. Only two of those were in Colorado. And it was interesting to note that those two in Colorado are Vanguard Classical School in Fort Collins and, again, Devlin High School here at Jeffco. A quick introduction to our elementary program. Again, core knowledge, and the core knowledge sequence prescribes what will be taught at different points during the year in the above-subject areas. So what that means for our kids, it's a coherent curriculum. So when kids are studying the Renaissance, they're studying Renaissance literature, Renaissance history, they're studying scientific figures from the Renaissance, geography, and art and music from the era as well. So it's a coherent curriculum that really makes it easy for kids to understand a concept as they move through the program. On the literacy perspective, we're using a program called RIGS Phonics, which is based on research that was done on helping adults with brain damage and rehabilitation. And it was found to be really effective in young kids as well. It's a multi-sensory approach, and it's also structured. We're also focused on grammar and spelling, in addition, just to the RIGS Phonics program. One other characteristic for our elementary school is the focus on cursive writing. There's, it's somewhat of a lost art in some schools today, but we think that's really a key and critical component to a classical liberal arts education. On the math front, we're using a Saxon and Singapore blend. Again, they're both excellent programs in their own right, and we ability group students in math. So if you're a 2nd grade or 3rd grade math level, all of our math classes at the elementary level change at the same time. So kids will be placed where it's most appropriate for them. And again, the classical nature is that we have exposure to Latin and Greek roots early in the elementary process. So kids start learning how those affect vocabulary in the development of the English language as well. Under the junior/senior high school program, as we stated, we're a core knowledge school through grade 8. We have a focus on classical literature, primary source documents, and Socratic seminar. Now, what we've seen in the early grade is more Socratic instruction, where teachers are engaging the elementary school kids. As kids become more mature and move into the high school level, it's more of a Socratic discussion or a seminar format. Latin is required in grades 6 through 9, so there'll be four years of Latin, and with one year of high school Latin required, and that'll be in the 9th grade. Fine arts and music are also a core part of our curriculum. We're really excited about the See You Succeed program. We have schools in Jeffco that are currently doing this. But what that program is, it's a partnership with University of Colorado Denver, where our staff are qualified, and they are qualified to actually teach classes that are directly awarded college credit. So if we're teaching a calculus course, we can, we had the flexibility where we can go the AP route, or we can be working, as long as, again, our staff are appropriately credentialed through UC Denver, to be able to teach that class with, for direct college credit. And also, our graduation requirements currently exceed the Jeffco requirements that will prepare our kids to be college and career-ready. On the governance perspective, again, our program has been initiated and developed by parents and members of the community. We have a commitment to strong governance practices, especially on financial controls and oversight. I understand that's a very sensitive issue to the community. Again, we're working with others for technical assistance and to implement best practices. I mentioned that we are replicating successful programs. We've been working closely with Ridgeview, Vanguard Classical, actually, the Aurora campus in this case, and Liberty Common as well. So we're really dedicated to replicating, not creating something new here. We have an independent board of directors, and we also have a school accountability committee as required in statute, an audit and finance committee, governance committee, and a development committee as well. Location. We have some really good news. We actually have signed a MOU with a very generous owner of a building that will be able to build out full capacity. We still have a confidentiality agreement until some other issues are worked out with the owner, but it's generally in this area, in the Denver West-South Golden area. Capacity and need. Again, at full buildout in year 7 will be approximately 728 students in grades K through 12. You guys received a recent brief on the urgent need for more student seats in our specific area, as a matter of fact, because of growth in Solterra and Highway 93. And, again, there's several proposals that have already come to you to consider on how that's alleviated. We would be glad, as a school, that would be able to come online next year to help alleviate some of that crowding that's currently going on and some of the changing demographics and increased populations in those areas. And we're also fortunate that the choice committee came out in the recommendations, I guess, last year recommending a core knowledge liberal arts school in our general area as well. So, our intent to enroll process is ongoing. When we submitted our application to you guys in August, August 15, we had 171 students that were committed. We're, of course, not happy with that number, so we've been working that really hard. As of this afternoon, we have 282 students. That's an increase in 110 students in past 45 days. We expect to announce our facility in the next two weeks and are confident, when we make the facility announcement, that we'll be able to target enrollment and get those numbers going really quickly. On the financial front, our financial model has been developed with minimal reliance on fundraising and grants. We did include the Colorado Startup Grant, because that's a fairly certain grant that we're working very hard to put a strong grant application into CDE. And we also have a commitment as a board to increase our financial expertise, both on the board and through our audit and finance committees, because we want to make sure that we're maximizing dollars into the classroom and that we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars and making sure we're focused on educating kids. Because of our facility arrangement and a generous donor that comes along with that, that's going to be extremely flexible with us on rent, that allows us to do some risk mitigation in our first year or two. If we have under enrollment, we have some flexibility in there where it's not going to put us at extreme risk. So it really reduces our sensitivity to our enrollment projections in the first couple of years, and we're really excited about that. So I want to wrap up here, just kind of our key points. Again, we are replicating what's proven to be highly successful here in Colorado. We have a central, convenient location. We're meeting the needs and demands of parents and the district. We have a strong commitment to governance and oversight. And also, the mission and the vision of our school are aligned to prepare students to flourish in life. So at this time, we'd be glad to do the round robin and take questions.
We will indeed do the round robin. And I'll tell you, I'll start on the other end, just to create some variety. Mr. Newkirk.
Certainly. Mr. Schuler, what kind of assessment data will you be using to modify instruction for individual students?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, well, just thinking that if a student, for example, is not initially successful in the school's curriculum, what kind of assessment data would you be using to modify that?
Sure.
Instruction, or would, to encourage them to stay at the school?
Right. Well, we'll be clear, the core knowledge sequence is considered a rigorous sequence, and because it's spiraled, it may be a challenge for kids who aren't coming from a core knowledge background. Our commitment and philosophy of our school is we have a student services program, which is where our special ed will be falling under. We have staffed that just to make sure that we have the resources to support any child or student who wants to come into our school and is willing to work hard. As far as the specific types of assessments, of course, we'll be doing the state-mandated assessments every year, but we'll also be developing our own internal assessments as well, much like Devlin does.
Okay, and will any of your founding team be looking for employment at your school?
Do you guys want a job at the school? So, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Can you talk a little bit more about how your school will be an opportunity to all kids? And just as I addressed the other group, you know, transportation and what if you've never had that Classical Academy background and you start at an older, you know, more advanced grade? How would they fit in?
Right. So I understand your question. A couple different pieces is how do we support kids who are coming, who may not be at the level expected, and a couple of other issues in there. So I'm going to maybe throw in a couple extra points in that as well. Again, as I responded to Mr. Newkirk, we've planned to have a robust student services program to help kids who are coming, who aren't at the level that we expect. And part of that's a cultural issue, and having a culture of high expectations, and working with students to get them up to where they need to be. On transportation, we're not planning on offering transportation just because of the limited resources we have as a school. We're proposing to do some different things with special education, and we look forward to engaging the district staff on that. We would like to be doing some more specialized training with our own special educators, especially in literacy, so that we can offer services to a wider range of students, especially, again, with autism asperger's and ADHD.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mentioned the 110 increase in 45 days. To what do you attribute that success?
Great question. So we've been on radio. We've appeared on several radio stations in the market. And also, a lot of it's word of mouth. We've been holding parent engagement sessions at libraries. We had another one last week. So we've been doing a lot of outreach and getting parents excited in what we're doing, and a lot of them are just going out and telling their friends. So it's been organic growth, again, just from within our own community.
Did you work with the League of Charter Schools in the assessment process and the NACSA evaluation process?
Yes, we did. So our application has gone through the two review cycles with the Colorado League of Charter Schools, which was a phenomenal experience in helping give us, really focus our application. If I can step back also and just respond to your earlier question. We have received a substantial grant from the Daniels Fund that we're going to be able to use and do outreach with that money. So it's up specifically, we've earmarked it for marketing and continued outreach, and we realize that we're proposing a lot of opening seats and that we're really devoted to surpassing those.
Thank you. Ms. Goldkiper.
Mr. Schuler, tell us more about your school's relationship with Hillsdale College. It was a topic of interest, according to the Charter Review Application Committee, and there was some discussion about possible political, religious, and conservative affiliations. As I read through the application, the other piece that is addressed is professional development for teachers. And reference specifically in the memo from the review committee is reference to burden of documentation required by Hillsdale so they can review and provide guidance, since their name is associated. But I understand that contractually, you maintain decision-making authority. Can you, can you share with us a little bit more about that relationship with Hillsdale College and what that entails?
Sure. And thank you for asking. This is a great question. As I mentioned, we are replicating successful schools that are already in Colorado, Ridgeview and Liberty Common. We approached them a year, over a year ago. It asked them, hey, you guys have successful programs. Would you guys be interested in replicating what you're doing here and working with us? Their response was, no, that's really not what we're doing. We're really focused on making, ensuring our schools are successful. So we found out that Hillsdale College is actually, has a program where they're charged with replicating the Ridgeview Classical Academy model, the Ridgeview Classical Schools model. The reason for that primarily is that the first headmaster at Ridgeview, and again, Ridgeview is actually a spin-off of Liberty Common as well, but the first headmaster at Liberty, at Ridgeview, went and left, and went to Hillsdale, where he helped bring the Ridgeview model there. So Hillsdale's the vehicle to replicating what we're doing. And Hillsdale is a liberal arts college, so they have the liberal arts experience. And so they are able to bring a lot of help and support to us in that regard. On the professional development, and specifically, what does that relationship look like on the PD level? So the professional development, again, this is really a win-win for us as a school and the community. Part of their program is that they are doing professional development for our staff. They're bringing their experts in various areas of liberal arts and coming in to instruction. And, like I mentioned, the RIGS Phonics, the specific programs, the classical nature of the program, and then all the other classroom management and some of those issues as well. Our MOU with Hillsdale, it's not a contract, it's an MOU. Any party can get out of it at will. There's no strings or hooks into a Jeffco school. Again, we included that. We thought it was very clean and favorable to us and the community in general. The reporting, what they've asked for in reporting was basically, we went back and had some conversations with them based on that, is they just want to know, again, oversight, are you guys watching your finances? They have the same concerns that you guys would have as an oversight board. They'd want to make sure that we're managing finances appropriately. They want to make sure that our students are on track and growing and achieving. But they made clear that their reporting requirements would not be an additional burden that would exceed anything that you as a school board or district would want.
Okay, thank you. Clarifying question about kindergarten revenue. Kindergarten revenue is shown, but it does not show full day, a full-day kindergarten program. The spreadsheet shows revenue for half-day kindergarten. Which, do you envision implementing full-day kindergarten? There are some concerns about, question about whether that's possible on the spreadsheet to have half-day kindergarten at the revenue dollar amount that you're suggesting.
Sure. So right now, our--
How's that square?
We've, we've talked at length about this as a board, and we're currently looking at two half-day kindergarten sections, so a morning and an afternoon. But we're not looking to offer full-day kindergarten at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So, thanks.
Ms. Feldman.
Okay, on page 107 and 108 in your packet, did you not bring it? You mean, you don't have it memorized? Just kidding. You talk about teacher evaluation, and you know, we all believe in the most effective teacher, and that's, that's going to make a difference for kids. What I noticed, which was glaring to me, was that you don't have teacher, any measurements, and the teacher evaluation is not tied to student performance, as it is in all our other schools, as it is required by our state. Can you comment on that or anything?
Sure. So there will be a performance component to the teacher evaluation. And this will be something, when our school leader comes in, that the school leader will be working with the board to design a good assessment for, for teachers.
So you don't, could you comment on any measurement tools at this point that you might have for teacher evaluation?
Not specifically without having the school leader respond specifically to that.
Okay. The other question I had is, I was looking at your schedule, and it was in color, and I love the colors. But what I was wondering about was in 6th grade, which is when you start the Latin instruction, I noticed that kids do not have any kind of physical activity during the day at all. So no physical education. How are you guys going to address the physical needs of 6th graders?
Right. And if that's the case, again, I apologize, I don't have that right--
That's okay.
--in front of me. But that, I believe that's an oversight, because we believe that physical--
Oh.
--activity and engagement is extremely important. It helps kids focus. And as a parent of small children, I know what it's like--
They've got to run around.
--to have kids cooped up and not having activity. So that's, that's something we'll go back and revise and have those discussions.
And I have one other question. It may be for Mr. Matlock, it may be for you, Mr. McMinamy. I noticed in the goals, they include like 11th grade and 12th grade goals. Is that common in a charter application, even though they're going to open for K-10, that they would have, they've already determined the baseline for 11th grade and 12th grade?
I'm going to let Mr. Matlock handle that one.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I actually don't know if that's common or not. I think it's wise, especially if they're--
I agree. I just was wondering.
--working off another model to actually project that out. So I don't know how common that is.
All right. I was concerned that there's already baseline data, and you haven't opened yet. But I assumed, and assuming is always a challenge, that it was based on the other schools that you are replicating, their data, you're saying, okay, we're going to use that as our baseline and move from there.
Right. And again, and--
Even though you don't have kids yet.
Right. And even going back and responding to your teacher assessment question, again, just, so we do have data from similar models that, of course, we would like, we intend to be performing at those levels. And, and back to teacher assessment, we also plan on working with the schools that we're modeling after to develop assessments that assess what's expected in a program like ours.
Well, I think we all agree that, you know, an effective teacher in every classroom is the goal.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming and being willing to go through the question list. We will, as the process was already explained, we will make a final decision in November.
Great. We look forward to that, and thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And that moves us to Section 7, which is ends monitoring. With each, each month, we review one of our board goals to talk about exactly what progress we've made, if there are any interventions that are needed, or changes in course to ensure that we are moving towards the board goals. However, ends monitoring also involves keeping track of all of the other objectives and ends. And to that end, last year, at the end of the year, we are, towards the end of the year, school year, we authorized loans to a couple of our charter schools, and tonight we'll review status on those. Ms. Askelson.
Good evening. I think the board has received a letter that, or a memo from myself, that was summarizing some updates on the two charter schools, Collegiate Academy and Mountain Phoenix. So at this time, if there's any questions about the update or other information that you'd like to know, I can take those questions.
Are there any questions? I'll just say that I was pleased to see that both appear to be in pretty good shape and that we don't have any loan issues identified at this time. Is that a correct summary from your perspective?
Correct. Both schools, at the end of June 30th for our fiscal year, came in under the borrowing that they had approved, and that this time, both schools are optimistic that they will not increase that borrowing and potentially pay it back.
That's excellent news. Thank you. Ms. Goldkiper.
I have a question, Ms. Askelson. Do we know how much money Mountain Phoenix has accessible in its reserve accounts? And if we don't know that tonight, is that information you could share with the board?
I'm not sure how much they would have in their foundations. I do know with their trustee, they have under $100,000 in a repair and replacement fund, and they also have $250,000 that was taken at close for an operational reserve. Both of those have payback conditions if they used those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is a discussion of fourth quarter financial results for 2013/2014 year. And I assume that's Ms. Askelson again.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I should introduce you as Kathleen Askelson, Interim Chief Financial Officer and Executive Director of Finance.
Thank you. Before I get started on the fourth quarter report, I do have some information to provide. We had a surveillance request from Moody's early in the month, and on September 10th, we had a phone conversation with them. It was myself, Lori Gillis, Steve Bell, Lori Dugan. It's an annual surveillance call that they look at the district and they look at our ratings that they've previously attached to the district. And the information we got back in the middle of September from that surveillance was that our ratings held. We have a AA2 and a AA3, and they did upgrade our outlook from negative to stable. So that was really, really good news. There's a report that will be available and sent to you, and it goes over some of the rationale, but they repeatedly looked at our reserves and our outlook for our reserves. So, again, can emphasize how critical it is that we continue on that positive path with our reserves.
I'll do a round robin here and offer any opportunities for questions after--
Can you see the presentation?
After you've been through the presentation. But given the time, I'd like to ask everyone to try and prepare a couple of questions.
And I will go quickly and simply here. Cash, and again, this is for June 30th, our fourth quarter report. This information is still preliminary, as we are in the middle of our audit. Our auditors are not with-- Our auditors are not with us this evening. They don't do a review of the fourth quarter because they're doing the audit of the fourth quarter. So it's just me here tonight to give you this report. Our cash management, we ended up at 18 million higher than the prior year. There were no TANs issued this year, as a reminder. And if you look at that chart, you can see, we're going to start out, again, in the current fiscal year with reserves that we start to spend down because of the property tax. Our property tax is over 50% of our funding. It doesn't come in until the spring, so it causes some cash flow issues for us. Last year, we covered that by pulling out some of our investments. This year, we're not going to be able to leverage that as much, so we probably will be looking at a security blanket for us to make sure that we get through that cash flow period. We'll be weighing our options with that and coming up with a recommendation. But we still don't anticipate issuing TANs, so. For the general fund, our revenues and expenditures were both 2% higher than the prior year. Our revenues increased mainly due to specific ownership tax and our state revenue. They came in at 100% of budget. Our expenditures increased primarily from compensation, para, and our curriculum purchase at the end of the year, and they also came in at 99% of budget. So we were very close in what we anticipated. For the general fund, just as a reminder for the year, our revenue increased, and that from our levy override and state funding, and that enabled us to not have to institute 45 million in reductions for the year. Para increased 0.9%. We were able to cancel furlough days and reinstate workdays this year for '13, '14, and there were other budget increases as adopted. Our fund balance increased 11.3 million. We had anticipated about 6 million, so that's about 5 million higher than we had expected. And just to put that in perspective, that's less than 1% of our expenditures. So, very close. And at this point, our board reserve policy is fulfilled. If you look at on page nine of our general fund, it is now positive. And I mentioned that curriculum earlier in the general fund, that was for the new math expressions that was part of the supplemental appropriation towards the end of the year that we discussed. Also, we had additional appropriations for mobile device readiness and classroom dashboard. Our other governmental funds, debt service, the fund balance that's sitting in there right now, from property taxes and collection that we collected in 2014, will be used to pay our principal and interest on our general obligation debt in December of 2014. So again, the timing of the property taxes to collect that, to make those payments in December. Capital reserve fund and our building fund, both ended the year right at budget. One was very close at 99.6. So the activity in that, those two funds picked up in the fourth quarters, as usual. We get geared up and get really working in June when school is out. Grants fund, revenues and expenditures increased in that fund for the year. 8 million of it was due to the best grants for the Rocky Mountain deaf school and Free Horizon construction around those two schools. We also had the REED Act and the Grants Act, or Gates Foundation, sorry. Our campus activity fund also had increased revenues and expenditures for the year. Majority of that was related to the outdoor lab fees and collection for that. Also, there's timing in that fund. It depends on some of the trips that the schools will take. They can be biannual, so we'll see variances from year to year as the activity goes on. Our transportation fund, fee collections were down a little bit from the prior year. We had some fee adjustment for more part-time ridership, so we had lower fees, so we anticipated that would be a little bit lower for this year. But our expenditures for special needs students did increase over the year, and that reflects in that expenditure category. For enterprise funds, we had a yellow flag on the third quarter for food service because of lower participation, and our revenues were down. We are going to continue to monitor this fund closely. We made adjustments for the current 2014-15 fiscal year. Price increase went into effect, but also there were some meal choices and menu planning that was changed. So we'll continue to monitor and make sure those changes are accomplishing what we expect for that fund. The childcare fund, all the activities, preschool before and after, and all, full-day kindergarten, all ended the year in positive net income for all of those programs. And property management had, as we expected, increased revenue from building use that we saw a year. Internal service funds, central service fund for copier and printing and equipment repair, they did spend down some fund balance. That was from doing a transfer to technology fund, we did that early in the year, for shared projects. The employee benefits fund is a self-insurance activity for dental and vision, and actually group life got moved to a fully insured program. So it's really just those two activities that are self-insured. And we are spending down reserves in this fund. We had some built-up for wellness program. Our insurance reserve fund, we had some additional claims for the 2013 storms, and our IBNR estimate that comes in the fourth quarter of the year came in at about 770,000 additional expense. So that's the majority of what that changed in the fourth quarter for that fund. Our staff is working, or worked this summer on a FEMA project out at Mount Evans, and we expect that to be about 500,000 for the project and be able to collect about 80% of that back from FEMA. Also noted in the, on the radar section of the transmittal, the environmental group applied for a natural disaster grant for 835,000. It was mentioned in that. They did get awarded that grant. So that works very well with the FEMA work that was going on at Mount Evans, and they'll be able to do a little bit more around the wastewater retention at the site. Technology fund expenditures were lower than planned. There was a little bit of delay on some hiring for projects, and so it came in lower for the end of the year, but anticipated to pick up in the next portion of the quarter going into the new year. Charter schools, so Rocky Mountain deaf school and Two Roads were not borrowing at the end of the year. Two Roads had a approval to borrow for 2014 and to pay off in 2015, so I expect no more borrowing from that school since they ended positive at the end of '14. The deaf school, they could be borrowing at the end of the first quarter. Their excess cost billing has not been approved yet, and that can happen, that the first quarter and second quarter, they're borrowing until they can do their billings for excess costs. And then, as we talked earlier, Collegiate and Mountain Phoenix were borrowing, but they were well within the borrowing that was approved by the board. Just some notes on some of the items that were on the radar in our facility updates, technology, healthcare reform, and special education. And at this point, I'll take any questions.
Okay, I guess I'll start with Ms. Feldman.
First of all, I am so pleased that our reserves are now in the positive, and thank you so much for such a complete report, and congratulations on the ratings. That's really awesome.
It was great affirmation.
Yeah.
It takes a team.
My question about reserves, are you anticipating, how are they looking forward? I know fourth quarter is, you know, kind of in the past, and now we're looking forward. I noticed that our next first quarter is like, next, in two weeks. Anyway, how are things looking for reserves with that?
Well, as I anticipate for first quarter, they'll look low because-
Right, you'll have to borrow.
-coming in. But we anticipate being able to meet our projected budget as adopted by the board. So when we look at the 14-15 budget, our plan was to add an additional 3 million to reserves. And that was something that Moody's looked at also, was our outplans, and to make sure we weren't turning around and trying to use those, that we were continuing to keep them stable.
Okay. And then, my second question, on the radar section of the transmittal, going to the classroom dashboard section, you said that timelines might be delayed because of new leadership in ERD and a lot of turnover in staff and such. How are things going with that?
And I might see if Brett would want to address that.
I'm sorry.
It's his Brett staff that's been working on the classroom dashboard, and he might have some more information on the ERD staff, too.
I was specifically wondering how delayed.
How delayed the dashboard is?
Yeah. You know, when you're driving down the street and it says delay, and if it's like 30 seconds, you're like, eh. If it's like two hours, you find another route.
Some of the challenges that we've had involve the data integration pieces. And so I think when we say delay, we're trying to make sure that when we plug the two systems together, it works. The stuff that ERD's doing is on time. They're tracking that project on time and within budget. But the technology piece is kind of new for us. It's kind of a new area, and we really don't have a good, solid time estimate for that. But we're looking at stretching out some of the delivery of the dashboard, and testing, the training of the schools is still ongoing. We have our pilot school set up, so we're confident that that's going to be okay. But I could get you an update next week?
That would be great, thank you.
Give you a little bit more information on all of this?
Sure, that would be wonderful. Thanks.
We had a presentation on Monday at Cabinet, and what we talked about at Cabinet was, there's, I think there's 15 pilot schools that are looking at some pretty intense staff development for deliverable in January of 2015. In those 15 schools, the original plan was to try to roll it out to all schools in January of 2015, and that's probably going to be a delay based on the staffing issues that we're having, and also the, making sure that the integration of that data is correct. We want to roll something out that's first class, and we feel like the professional development in those 15 schools may allow us to put something into those schools in January, and then work on that during second semester, and then scale it in for next year to the full system, making sure that we have all the bugs worked out.
A delay for a semester.
We'll send you the timeline tomorrow, but that was the discussion we had at Cabinet, is, you know, we'd rather put something out there that's going to work than try to put it into 15 schools and, you know, struggle with it all second semester and have people get frustrated.
I just remember, we heard lots of teachers say, you know, how wonderful it was, and I knew we had just a limited number of schools piloting the classroom dashboard, so I was kind of wondering how that was going.
Right. And we'll send a report tomorrow when we have the board update for you.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Askelson, as always, thank you so much for a very thorough fourth quarter report. Appreciate it. And wanted to talk a little bit more about, just step back for a moment, with Ms. Gillis' departure, to talk about the transition, and how you're thinking about that transition, and what that looks like, and if there's a plan in place, if that's something that could even be shared with the board.
Well, Lori Gillis, of course, was very thorough in giving us some transition information and a path of what the projects we were working on. So hopefully, there won't be any interruption. We can seamlessly go, step in and try to support all the initiatives that are on the table, and there's a lot going on, and make sure that they're still successful. So it's a busy time, and we, but I have great staff, and they are all behind us to make sure that we're successful in the initiatives that we've got going.
Great. We'd love to see a copy of the transition plan or memo, if there is one. Thank you.
You mentioned, or referenced, the acceleration of some of the spend for the $4.5 million mobile device readiness project accelerated into last year as authorized, and I do understand that. But I'm wondering what the implications are for that project? I also saw that the spend was tracking a little slower than anticipated, so will that money that shifted into last year, will there be a shift every year to move that up? Or was that a one-time thing? There'll be a less than $4.5 million spend this year, and then we expect $4.5 million in out years?
And again, I'm going to turn to Brett Miller on the plan for mobile device readiness and the out years.
We were going to send an update to the board on our major initiative sometime in November and include the MDR program, but we will not be moving, I guess the question was, is the $4.5 going to be moved to the next fiscal year? Is that what you're asking?
I'm asking if some, we accelerated some portion of that into the prior year. Will we also accelerate some portion of next year's into this year? I, is it a line shift, or is it a one-time shift?
It's a one-time shift.
Okay.
Thanks, Brett.
And just to follow up on that, because the implication behind it is, you had noted that the spend was a little slower than anticipated on this project. Is that because we're not ready to deploy? Or is it because demand hasn't dictated that we deploy quite at the rate we were anticipating?
We actually, one part of the program accelerated. That would be the wireless access points that we delivered to the schools. That will wrap up in one week. We did that because of the park testing that we were anticipating next spring. The part of the fiber build-out, the core infrastructure pieces of equipment took a little bit more time than we anticipated. But I believe at the end, we're still going to be well under the budgeted amount that we provided for you earlier this year.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams.
I don't have any questions at this point.
Mr. Newkirk.
Okay, and again, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Askelson, for this comprehensive report. You had some good, positive news about two of the charters, Mountain Phoenix and Collegiate Academy. And I'm just wondering, what is the criteria for removing the yellow flag on those and the other two charter schools?
Well, as long as they have an approved borrowing, I usually keep a yellow flag on them to monitor, because we're going to pay especially a close attention to them, to make sure they're on track, that their budgets are on track, and that they don't step backwards. The other two schools, the Rocky Mountain deaf school, they, because of their excess cost form, will be borrowing usually the first two semesters of the year. They didn't last year because they had some best grant matching funds that had kind of bumped up their reserves, but they've spent that on their building. So that's just to make sure that we're always aware of when someone is going negative as far as borrowing, that we're informing you, that it's not a surprise, and that we've kept you up to date on all that information. Two Roads should be removed from the yellow flag. I would like some confirmation from them, probably in writing, that they've released the note. So, once they do that, we should be good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update and the Q and A. We also have in section eight on our discussion agenda, a discussion of construction manager, general contractor selection for the Quail complex Phase II. This item was removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Mr. Bell.
This item relates to the completion of a project that's been included in our master plan for quite some time, which is the complex located 809 Quail, specifically Building Four, Building Five, which are our maintenance and facilities groups. Again, we started in 2010, and we're just finishing up, projected to be completed by January, February of 2015. The contractor for the Phase II has been bid. We had 60 respondents or thereabouts. We went through the interview process, all the normal channels, and would like to award the contract so we can finish Phase II.
Mr. Newkirk, I believe you asked to pull this off, so I'll let you open with a question.
Certainly. I just have a couple short questions here. If you could tell us, what are the district's future plans for the facility? Is it the lifelong learning center that are vacated, will be vacated?
We're going to hold those facilities. The land originally was conveyed to the district by the United States government, so it's probably not something that we could prepare to sell or transfer to the private sector for developmental purposes. We may have some problems there. Our plan is to hold it. Our near-term plans are, we will use it for off-season storage of heavy equipment. So in the winter, we'll store all of our summer equipment there, and in the summer, we'll store all of our winter equipment there. That's part of the efficiency of moving all of our facility maintenance groups down to Building Four and Five, is that we do have them all consolidated seasonally, so we don't have travel time, we have efficiencies of personnel, and quite frankly, we have some code compliance problems in the current site up for landscapes.
Okay, thank you. Second question, can you comment on what impact, if any, this relocation would have on central terminal bus drivers and the mechanics? Is it going to crowd them in any way?
No.
Okay. And do you anticipate landscape services outgrowing the Quail facility in the foreseeable future?
Not in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
We feel like the facility, when completed with Phase II, will be adequate for our needs.
Great. And the $1.8 million in relocation costs, how do you anticipate that'll eventually save the district money?
Well, everything we do in our facilities group and all of our business services is directed toward efficiencies of function, efficiencies of performance for our employees, and cost savings. The simplest one that I can tell you is that we will no longer have- The simplest one that I can tell you is that we will no longer have facilities groups traveling from the Warren Tech site, simply traveling to gas up in the morning and in the evenings, or even during the day, because the gas docks are right across the street from our Quail complex. So that's rather simple. The more extensive things that we think we're going to see is improved performance because we will have all of our small engines department, all of our mechanics, all of our tools access. Everything that we do relating to facilities or maintenance of equipment will be housed in one area, as well as the people. And we think that's an advantage on performance and efficiency of how we do our jobs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bell. I've got no further questions. Thanks for the clarification.
And just for information, the $1.8 million number that is in the resolution was a placeholder. It looks like our actual cost will be about $1.1. Any other questions?
Thank you for ending with good news.
Thank you.
With that, this was a consent agenda item. Is there a motion on this item?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the award of contract to Daniel Berry Construction, Inc. for the 809 Quail complex Phase 2 project, and to authorize the Executive Director of Facilities and Construction Management to enter into and execute a contract with the CMGC in the amount not to exceed $1.8 million.
Second?
Roll call? I'm sorry, discussion? Any further? Roll call?
Ms. Dahlkepper?
Yes.
Ms. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Newkirk?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes. We're going to take a five-minute break. It's been a while. Okay, we'll resume our agenda with Section 9, Item 9.01, Policy Review, GP 13 Committee Are there any recommended edits to GP 13 Committee Structure? Ms. Feldman?
First, a number. And some of these, I think, are just wording. But on 1338, the board did not approve we appointed. And so that's just a wording thing. We went through an appointment process. And then I noticed that the Data Technology Committee was not listed. Is there a reason for that? Was it just an oversight? We probably need to get that on here.
Yeah, I think what happened is this is from last year, and I just don't think it's been added to that yet. But we can certainly...
The date was January 16th, so I assume we already had it, yeah.
It was to be added. I think it just didn't make it to the document. So Ms. Neal, will you assist with that? Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Dahlkepper?
I have a question about when the 1338 council will meet next and when the committee will weigh in on the proposed compensation model, or I shouldn't say proposed any longer, the compensation model tied to evaluations.
Our first meeting is next week. And the focus of the committee initially is going to be on the inter-rater reliability question and understanding what that means.
Thank you.
I have one edit recommendation. It's an addition of a statement to this policy, and that is that with the exception of the Audit Committee, board members shall not be members of board committees. There's a circular governance problem there where we have board members sitting on a committee that then advises the board. It's telling them what to say and then listening to the input.
But that doesn't mean we still can't attend the meetings.
Absolutely not. They're public. One of the items in GP 13 is that board committees must post their meetings and allow public meetings. Okay? Ms. Dahlkepper?
I think it's important to point out that that change would mean that, if I'm reading this correctly, board members are no longer members of the Strategic Planning Advisory Council.
That's right.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. And I will tell you, the reason I have a problem with it is because that has been a very collaborative conversation between the board, community members, business leaders, parents, and others. We've had a long history of working, having conversations. And I think there's a really good two-way dialogue among board members and members of the Strategic Planning Advisory Council. And I'm not sure how it's a value add to take the five of us off that strategic advisory committee.
So I'll repeat the concern so you understand the value add. The value add is that participating in a process where you advise your advisors on what you want them to tell you is not effective. The process should be, we listen very carefully to the collaborative development that that group works through, and then we listen to the advice they give us, rather than telling them what advice we want to hear.
Well, I appreciate, I'm sorry if I could just respond. I really appreciate your helping me to understand that, first of all, Mr. Witt, that's very good of you. Secondly, I would also say that I think it's unfortunate that we haven't seen you attend the Strategic Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Williams has attended the last couple. And if you did attend those Strategic Planning Advisory Councils, you would have an opportunity to see firsthand the strength of having board members seated at different tables across that Strategic Planning Advisory Council, having important decisions about everything from budget priorities, hearing different perspectives on facilities management, on major education reform initiatives that are underway. So again, I'm hard-pressed to understand how this change contributes to the betterment when it seems to be working perfectly well right now. Why change it? What's the problem you're trying to solve?
It's very bad governance. And the reason you haven't seen me at those meetings is because I do not choose to participate in a process where I am telling my advisors what I want to hear from them.
I have yet to tell anybody on our Strategic Planning Council.
If you're a member of the committee, you have, you have part of that dialogue.
Mr. Witt, if you had participated in those meetings, you would know that it's a two-way conversation, that school board members do not dominate those conversations, that school board members listen and have two-way dialogue. And at the end of the meeting, board members do share their perspectives because they are asked to share them by the Strategic Planning Advisory Council. I think this is a bad move. I don't think it makes sense, and I don't think there's any value add.
Okay. So I move that we add to GP 13 the statement that board members shall not be members of board committees, with the exception of the Audit Committee.
Second?
Roll call?
No.
Ms. Feldman?
No.
Mr. Newkirk?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes. GP 14 is our next policy. Is there a, are there any recommendations for edits to GP 14? Ms. Feldman?
Actually, it's a question. Number one, it says, "First conversation in a private setting between the member in question and the board president." I'm wondering, what if the member in question is the board president?
It says, "or other individual," so it could be any other board member.
Any recommendations for changes to this policy?
I think the bigger question for the board is whether the board's going to follow its own policies. And...
Please hold your applause so we can conduct business. If you can't withhold your applause, you will be escorted out.
I think that is the bigger question here tonight. And as you look at GP 08, there are something like 19 covenants regarding what the board will do. There are three things that the board won't do. And one of those is, the board won't maintain hidden agendas. And I think that unfortunately, we've been continually surprised at this board table. And I would ask that we no longer do that, that we're respectful and that we share information to the best of our ability in advice, in advance, I'm sorry. We've seen surprises like the hiring of an attorney for the board. We've seen surprises like the compensation scheme that was presented by Mr. Witt in the middle of a meeting. The resolution that was handed to us as we were reviewing the Fact Finder report. And I think that if we're truly going to talk about good governance, we should walk the talk.
Okay. Are there any other recommendations for GP 14? All right. Our next agenda item is Public Comment Part 2. And we do have further public comment. So for those in attendance, I will just give you the heads-up that we have probably 45 minutes of comment remaining. So with that, Marilyn Chapel and Amanda Benson? Sandy Ledoux?
We're here for Amanda. Remember, she had surgery.
But this is not a group. This is an individual.
And I have her statement.
Okay. If you would like, if you have her statement, feel free to read it.
Great. Okay. Are we at one minute?
Yeah, we're at one minute.
My name is Wendy McCord. I'm standing in for Amanda. As you know, she had surgery. Her concerns were focused on the lack of ethics and the use by the board majority of religion and partisan politics. We've just heard about board policy violations and the failure of the board to even follow its own policy regarding addressing policy violations. One of the items that Ms. Benson wanted us to talk about was the slander by the board majority against the teachers and students of this district. And so I just wanted to share this one thing. I submitted a cora request to the district that asked for, since September 1st, please provide all public records provided to Ken Witt or Julie Williams related to members of JCEA and their role in the student walkouts that have taken place since September 19th, 2014. The response I got from the district was, "There are no records responsive to your request."
Sandy Ledoux? I'm sorry, Amanda Benson? And Sandy Ledoux?
Who's Amanda Benson?
Sandy Ledoux?
Benson Group.
Donna Jack? Donald Oatman?
Hi, my name's Don Oatman. And I had sent some materials to the board, which I got going on mainly because I read in the paper about the equalization for charter schools. And I intuitively knew that the word "equalization" didn't really work real well because the assumption was those are the dollars that went to every school. It's not true. I sent a number, two pieces of information to the board. I was supposed to get a response in two weeks, got a response two months later. And my concern is that the equalization really isn't equalization. And in fact, probably if you were to take a close look, you'll see that the charter schools are getting a lot more money per student than the regular schools. And what I would like you to do, or I'd like to do, is have the board or find out what the procedure is for me to meet with your Oversight Financial Committee to discuss those materials. And I have sent a letter, a response. I got a response from Mr. Newkirk a week or so ago. And I've sent a letter this last week requesting that I would be able to look it up. And I don't know how I do that. Do I go through you or do I contact CFO?
Thank you. The board will respond to your query.
In the next two months or the next week?
Hopefully quicker than that. I'm fairly confident. Roberta Sutton? Barbara Bellows?
I already gave my...
Dolores Kopp?
I'd like to continue a little bit further from what I said earlier. We, taxpayers, and then as we look at our students, many times we feel like they are truly losers when it comes to the taxpayer money that goes out and what do we get for our money? It troubles me that I realize that right now, current information is that we spend nearly $11,000 per student per year. And yet our education in terms of our rank, when you compare us to other countries, that we are, we have gone down. We are not staying on top of things. Is education reform needed? Yes, it is. But it must be a bottom-up reform, starting at the local level. It's against the U.S. Constitution to set up a federal system of education. You are just, Jefferson County Board of Education, need to stand up against the pressure of adopting the Common Core standards and Park.
Thank you. Reed Warner? Peter, I'm sorry, Pete Roybal? Ed Sutton?
Plato, Aristotle, Thomas Jefferson, all people we're familiar with, understood the need for students to understand and esteem our institutions, the laws, and the traditions of our country, if the country was to succeed. These men were well aware that democracy and patriotism were inseparable. Our schools have fled from the idea of moral education and of encouraging patriotism and a common American culture. Instead, we have begun to teach students that exceptionalism of America is not exceptional. And we teach that patriotism is passe, that moral relativism is good, and whatever feels good is okay. So why is it important to teach patriotism? Patriotism is essential to the survival of our rights under our Constitution and to the survival of an exceptional America. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Murray, or Eva Murray? Jim Fernald?
Well, thank you. At the August 28th meeting, I heard people lauding performance pay. Then it came up as to whether highly effective teachers should be paid more than partially effective and so forth. A statement was made that no one opposed the evaluation model until this year. That's not true. Most teachers have felt it's ridiculous. It's just another hoop one had to go through. So I had an epiphany as I considered these situations. Teachers fundamentally see the world differently than do people in other areas of endeavor. Money is not the motivating factor to teachers that it apparently is outside of education. As long as compensation is adequate or acceptable, and that is becoming an issue, other things are more important. When I watch the graduates cross the stage at graduation, that's what it's all about. I realize I probably can't explain this to non-teachers. I don't know if they can understand, just as I wouldn't understand the culture in a medical office or law firm. So the fundamental problem with the compensation plan is it's teachers, not business executives whom you're trying to motivate. That's why, despite what I know to be honorable intentions, it will fail.
Thank you. Garrett McDonald, please hold your applause. Garrett McDonald? Katherine Eisenberger?
Chairman Witt, Ms. Williams, and Mr. Newkirk, thank you for your leadership and integrity this evening. I am very concerned that cursive has been removed from our curriculum. If students can't read and write cursive, how will they be able to read our founding documents? How will they be able to understand that this is an exceptional nation? How will they be able to appreciate the liberties that many have died to preserve for all of us? Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Gredikian?
I'm disgusted with the behavior of this board majority. Clearly, Mr. Newkirk saw that Ms. Williams' curriculum committee proposal was inflammatory, hence his proposed changes. Clearly, the media saw through Ms. Williams' proposal as a farce. Yet all three of you, instead of ever acknowledging the fortitude of our students and their priorities... instead of ever acknowledging the fortitude of our students in their protests, instead chose to use this as an opportunity for Jeffco and teacher bashing. Where is the proof that teachers and the evil union bosses orchestrated the student walkouts? You should believe in the institution you were elected to represent, but you clearly don't. Instead, you disrespect and denigrate students, parents, and district staff at every opportunity. What you should have done was listen and talk to the community instead of about them. Your agenda is clear. Like your friend Laura Boggs, you intend to tear Jeffco apart. Ultimately, I believe your intent is to privatize public education. Jeffco is united in a common goal to fight back against your tyranny. We will not stand idly by while you work to dismantle all that makes Jeffco great. I, we, demand your resignation effective immediately.
Thank you. Eloise Garrison. If you outburst to the board again, you will be escorted out.
That was not an outburst.
Kim Mangle. Erin Boschi or Boshi?
Hello, I'm Dawn Cameron from Lakewood High School. I'd like to thank James and Tina for covering what I would have otherwise covered. So it leaves me time to thank Jill and Leslie publicly for everything you do. You are standing up to a bully.
Please hold your applause.
And a tyrant. You are standing up to ignorance and uninformed people. You are standing up to, I don't know how to characterize, Mr. Newkirk. I thank you for everything you do for the public and to defend the students of Jefferson County. I would ask in advance that Mr. Witt not thank me for my speech. This is not for you. I would also like to let you know that two weeks ago, I had a letter of resignation ready to bring this board if you passed the curriculum committee rules. I have been talked out of it because I'm going to fight within this system. And I'm going to teach kids every day theories, every day theories, 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 because I teach science and it's all theory, and don't thank me.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Hicks. Doug Hicks. Cynthia Perry.
I did speak before, but I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the board members. I don't know that everybody realizes that you volunteer your time. You're not paid at all. You have a hard job, I think, so...
Please be quiet.
So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Michael Curl. I think we already...
So hi, I'm Heather Kennedy, and I'm an alumni of our Vada High School, so Go Reds, mother of two children, a Jeffco taxpayer, a youth specialist at the school public health. Youth are assets to our schools and our communities. It is a task of healthy adolescent development to take on adult-like roles and to rebel or experiment. We, as adults and as our community, must offer and encourage pro-social opportunities to achieve these developmental tasks, like standing up for what we believe in, purposeful opportunities to be engaged in decisions that affect them. Young people and students deserve to be part of the development of every policy, program, or practice that impacts their lives. And by being involved in this decision-making with adults, young people learn essential skills that foster critical thinking beyond the classroom. Finally, I ask you, every attendee still here, the media, the board, to think before you speak. Do not perpetuate negative stereotypes about students.
Thank you. Michael Wilson. Deanna Masia Antonio Miller.
I'm a Jeffco parent of three, two of those still attending my local high school. I cannot stand by and watch what has been happening to our community since the election last fall. If you share facts that oppose the outright bullying and nastiness that has been directed towards our new board members, somehow you hate teachers, which is absolute nonsense. What I am outraged at is the smear campaign that started the moment the Colorado Educators Association lost their control of this board. Facebook page Jeffco School Board Watch is a classic example. As I read the outright false information and nastiness continually posted, I commented to challenge with opposing information. I was banned from the website. This tells me the leadership of this site is not interested in truth. Then to see the manipulation of our students with outright false information to spark protests, appalling. I do not appreciate 48 NEA members from 18 other states coming into Colorado to stir up trouble against this board. I'm afraid this campaign will not go away, but I can only hope the good citizens of Jeffco will see through the smokescreen to the truth of what's really happening. Thank you, board members, for your service.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. That completes Part II of Public Comment. That went faster than I anticipated with a lot of absentees. Ms. Neal, oh, there you are. Ms. Neal, would you join us for the board work calendar?
Absolutely. Your next meeting is October 16th. That's a special meeting. You have a full agenda, so I'm not sure if you're going to want all of it on the 16th, but you added tonight superintendent goals, so I would assume that's one of the first things you'll do. You had it for 15 minutes tonight. I would assume the same amount on the 16th.
I'm sorry. Could you pull the microphone closer to you or maybe, never mind, maybe we just wait for the screen to stop. I'm not hearing you.
So you have 15 minutes for superintendent goals discussion, your first discussion. Then you had moved a student achievement presentation for an hour. You have a discussion of the choice steering committee membership for 30 minutes, school-based budgeting, which was coming back, looking, having you look at the citizen budget tool, and that's an hour's discussion. Facilities planning, then they need some action from you, which I think came from your prior discussion, and you'd put off until October 16th, and that's an hour's discussion. A status update on assessments, which the board requested, and that's an hour's discussion. And that would be your meeting, which would be about 5:30 to 10:30.
I would like to remind everyone that when we moved the superintendent goals to the next meeting, we have an obligation to complete them at the next meeting. So I'd like to ask Mr. McMenamy if he would submit to the board in the next week his proposed performance goals so that we have that, as we were anticipating going through that today. So we have that input so that we're able to make the right use of that agenda item on the 16th.
So you're saying you'd be discussing and acting on the goals at the same meeting?
Well, if we get them before, if we get his input before, we can at least have that process.
We don't follow work.
Now, if we need to schedule a special meeting to finalize, we can certainly determine to do that.
If the board would like, just, yeah.
And just to, in case there is discussion of scheduling a special meeting, I want to be on the record that I will be out of town on business, and I would hope that a special meeting would not be scheduled anytime between October 8th and 12th, or October 22nd and 24th. Thank you.
An alternative to scheduling a special meeting and an alternative to having to take action on the same meeting where we have the discussion, because those are the two we're faced with right now, would be for this board to make a motion right now to alter the contract, which stipulates that we will have finalized goals by the October 31st, and move that to November 15th instead so we could address it on the November 6th meeting, finalize on November 6th meeting. I believe those are probably our three options. Did anyone have a preference? Ms. Dahl Kemper?
Mr. Witt?
What would be your preference?
Please continue. I have no comment.
You just...
I have no comment, Mr. Witt.
You just expressed concern that we might not follow our policy, so please suggest your remedy.
Would it make a difference if I did?
It would. That's why I'm soliciting it.
It hasn't so far, but thanks for soliciting. I appreciate it.
So then November 6th, you have the next regular business meeting, and your study session would be the draft facilities master plan. Then your business meeting is your usual honors recognition, public comment, monitoring reports on EL 6, 7, 8, 13, and 14. And ends discussion on the charter applicants, where you make a decision on the two applications. An hour's report on technology, 30 minutes on discussing your budget parameters for the 2015, 2016 budget preparation, the first quarter financial report for half an hour, the final approval of the survey questions for the budget, sorry, school-based budgeting, capital financing plan options for 30 minutes, and review of the next two governance process policies, 15 and 16.
Okay. I believe the one open issue we have on the table so far is what we do about finalizing Mr. McMenamy's goals. Is there a motion to suspend policy and complete those goals on the same night we discussed them? Or is there a motion to modify the contract to extend the date so that we can address it on November 6th? Or is there a motion to contemplate a special meeting? Ms. Feldman?
I move to suspend the contract and finalize Mr. McMenamy's goals on November 6th, that we follow our board policies in doing so.
Second.
Discussion. I'm fine with finalizing them on the 6th. That gives us time to discuss next meeting and then finalize with a subsequent meeting.
Yes, my only comment, Mr. Witt, would be that that is, that's a rather long meeting that day, and it says we are not going to finish by, until 11:15 or 11:30. Is there something that could possibly be moved to the study session on the 20th?
What would you propose moving, Mr. Newkirk?
I don't see anything. Is there anything there that's time-critical?
I would recommend moving the technology report.
Okay, for one hour?
Yeah, it's a one-hour agenda item. I don't think it's time-critical. This would be an opportunity for our staff to mention if it is time-critical. Okay.
You're okay with that, Mr. Miller?
Yes, I am.
Let's defer the technology, one hour, to November 20th, and add a finalize Mr. McMenamy's goals on the 6th pending the motion. Will you accept, well, who made the motion? I'm sorry. Jill did. Jill, would you accept a friendly amendment to, well, we don't need an amendment to that. We can just say we're going to do it. I don't care. Do you want to amend it to say that we move the technology to the 20th?
I believe the motion on the table was to finalize the superintendent goals on November 6th. I don't understand why we need another motion.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Roll call?
Ms. Dahl Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Feldman?
Yes.
Mr. Newkirk?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then, no, please, then pursuant to the motion we just passed, I'd like to move the technology committee, the technology discussion to the November 20th agenda item.
Right, I got that.
Thank you.
Are you set?
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.